You know, go over to four corners and take the right and go up into there. There's dirt roads all over the place. Go to Holland Pond. See, see a lot of stuff on the bike. That's what I like about it. I just like to poke along. Poke along. I'm not trying to make time or anything.
Yeah, you're just enjoying being outside. Okay, are we gonna, is this on yet?
It is on.
So we're gonna start the meeting?
Oh, we have a quorum.
We do.
Yes, we do. That's why it feels a little late maybe. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Do you have anything for update agenda? Okay, I have something from Judy Valente, a resident, that she wanted me to read. A text that she sent me today because she couldn't make the meeting. It's um, good afternoon, Annie. I am respectfully submitting this text to state for the record that I am still an active club officer for the Brighton Snowmobile Club as the elected treasurer. I hopefully will retain my duties at the end of May, club business meeting on May fourteen, when officer elections take place. I feel there may have been a misunderstanding about me being done to the fact that the the club does not meet officially in June or July. I am also unsure at the time about participating on any open positions or further positions with the town. I would have attended the meeting in person tonight, but have a previous commitment with my role, role as Trails Coordinator for Essex County VAS. I also felt I needed to say something for people who were concerned that I quit and showed from the Snowmobile Club, quit and showed me recorded and showed that showed me recorded meeting on the April twelfth when we were talking about it.
Right.
Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Judy Valente.
In a nutshell, what is she saying? She's not gonna join the planning commission?
Well, she doesn't know. She's she's not making the commitment now. And and just that the fact that some snowmobile members were watching it and then they thought she was quitting the treasurer. So they, you know, told her, you know, and then she watched it and she's she kinda got upset about it. So she just wanted to make it clear because, you know, the other people were asking the same thing. So I just wanted to get it out there. Okay? Um, next on the list is uh, the town public meeting, April twenty-third, which is in two days. We have some updates on that.
We do. We have started, um. I got the first part of the slideshow put together for this. Can share that with you guys.
We have anybody joining the meeting?
Nope. I do think we should not show them.
No, no. I always kind of like to know who's watching.
But it'll be on YouTube so they can watch it afterwards.
Okay.
So I guess this slide will be up as you're doing your introduction of, you know, because.
I think I might. I was gonna say that after the meeting, but.
I I will write you. I think you should.
I want you to say, okay.
You should open the meeting.
It'd be two or three sentences and you'll be done.
Okay, alright.
Something simple, welcoming everybody.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good.
Alright, I did it once before. It's like, I can do it again. Didn't get out of that one.
So, so this is what I put together for an agenda. Joel and I have kind of talked about it and it seems like it would work. Um. So number one is what is the town plan? Because most people coming aren't gonna know what the town plan is.
Talking about. It's an official document, you know. Um, it's a thing.
There is a thing. Um, there's twelve required elements to be in the town plan. Next slide, going to show you what this twelve things are. Um. Why do we need the town plan? There's another slide on that. Um. Process we're gonna follow to go through this. And then the slides that aren't done yet is sort of the we've, we assumed that this first meeting, we would use this as a time to discuss the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plants, the downtown project, water line project. And then I'll do an update on broadband because the that it kind of fits with one of the twelve elements is a utility and facility plan. So it seemed like those were the four that over the next eight years are all gonna get updated.
Yep.
Be good. Think you wanna add any others?
No.
So I'm gonna fix this because I, I when I was um, not the town, what is the town plan? This is just kind of a description of what it is. We'll kind of talk about it and explain it to people. Um, you know, it's basically what the towns ideas are for the next eight years.
Hey.
It's, we're gonna have a bigger screen than this, right?
Yes, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I've got the big, big one. We're gonna put up with the projector. Um, yeah, I'm not trying to haul that thing downstairs again. We did that once and that was an absolute nightmare. And we don't have to stand for it anymore. They got rid of it. When they put it on top of that, I don't know what they did with it.
No.
So, um. Then there's the twelve requirements of as to end the plan. You guys will see that. Read the plan. You know your plan inside and out. You're all ready to answer questions. Um, this is the one I have to add to. So why does it matter? It's, it's everything. The reason we have to have a town plan, but the one that's missing off of this is our downtown designation is not on here. That is the town plan is required to keep that, which makes a lot of these other things possible, especially when it comes to grant funding. Um, without the downtown designation, we don't qualify.
You know, we might wanna throw in here something about how the the states the states, what the state encourages and what they make funds available to do in terms of planning and zoning and community development. You know, it's like, maybe we want a slide on ACCD.
Mm-hmm.
Agency of Commerce and Community Development, because they're the agency that really um. They have ideas about how communities should develop and they provide programs to help towns do that. We've taken advantage of that over the years. I mean, all these planning grants are, you know, community development grants.
Um, that's the other one that he did, the uh, the landworks one. That was.
Oh, with Better Connections.
Better Connections.
But so the state encouraged us to do all these things after, after what's his name came, Paul Costello.
Yep, CCRD.
They followed up with this. They said, here, apply for this grant, apply for that grant. That's how we got the seventy thousand for the Better Connections and then we got, you know, two different grants. Anyway, it's just maybe germane for people to know that.
There's a purpose to all of this.
There's a logic to what we're doing, you know? It's not just pulling it out of our hats. Um. Anyway, it just is the way of sticking that in there somehow or just let me, I can blab about it for two seconds if you want.
I can put it, I can make up a simple slide and then, and then we can blab about it.
Because also there's been the grant. That's another thing. For the money. They're, they're the ones that are funding this whole process. If, if we get the grant. Twenty-two thousand dollar grant.
Right. We're, we're paying for this meeting because this is, we haven't got the grant yet. So this is on us.
And we have to do this one now because the water and sewer projects are imminent.
When are we gonna know if we're gonna have the grant for Allison? Don't.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Well, that's the one?
Yeah. Yeah, June?
Yeah.
And what if we don't have the money to pay her? I mean, from that grant.
Side, we have to, I think, go to the select board and say, you know, the UK are okay if we go over budget. We won't have maybe as many sandwiches, but you know. Well, yeah, we'll have to see. I think we're gonna get the grant. I do. It's such a small change. I mean, that
Right.
Grant gives up to thirty thousand dollars. It's very competitive, but I think that we've got a really good shot at it. If we don't get it, NVDA still helps us. They just might not help us.
Well, we'll have to do more of the work on our own.
We'll have to, yeah, and right, and we won't have food.
I noticed in your presentation for the planning board, you didn't mention the the work we did on hazardous mitigation.
As it, well, that's um.
A different program.
It's a different program.
But it still comes under the planning board.
Yeah, but it's not under the town plan. Town plan and planning position are two different things.
Well, I thought we had to have that.
Well. It'll probably, because we wanna think about Meadow Street and protecting it, that probably and the flooding that occurs on Railroad Street, that would be a hazardous mitigation grant that we would apply for. So we want to identify that as.
Right, and that could be in this, there's a flood resilience plan right here, which is one of the twelve elements we have to have.
Could probably say after that hazardous mitigation.
Right, because that is, that's part of that. Fun, hazardous mitigation. Right, we need a bridge on those streets.
On the road, absolutely.
Or we, or we need more culverts or something, but. Sorry, I'm late.
I'll tell you, these, these concrete culverts that the state is making and buying. So no culverts involved, nothing. It's just dig it up, put the.
Boxhole.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, no.
I mean, that, that would work perfect over there.
I don't know. Uh. I don't know if they thought that the two big culverts we have in there was enough. Wasn't enough. We put two more culverts in, still not enough. And I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't wash that road away. It hasn't for a while, but at any time that, that road acts as a dam. If you go down there, you can see the water on the uphill sides like this. And then it gets up there and it starts going across and it's got some velocity and then the road is.
Look at the flood they had when uh, Philip, Philip Gervais Land got flooded out. That water was high.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is.
Yeah, I think it was over the bridge.
The, the thing is with the Meadow Street is the first bridge coming in holds up water. If you were looking, that's the first thing in the sequence. That's the first thing you run across and all those big storms you put down there and you can see, here's the bottom of the bridge. And here's the water line up six inches above the bottom of the bridge. So that's a dam. It's holding up the water. Then I think it backs up all back in there and starts filling up. And then our road acts as a dam as well.
Yeah.
We have a study. We have a the uh, not uh, forest, but uh one of the other agencies, Uden.
Hydrologic study, H H study, I don't know.
One of the federal people, uh, Army Corps of Engineers actually did a study down there, gave us some options for what to do. Um, and you know where that's at. Yeah, I can lay my hands on all that stuff.
Use that because we might be able to get because that, there was flooding there during the first flood in July last year. There was damage.
Yeah, it comes up.
Damage list. Which the way that FEMA works is you get money to put it back the way it was. And then you can get hazard mitigation money where you can get additional money to put it back better. And, you know, we, we will qualify for that, but I have to be able to write the project and say, you know, here's what we want, here's why.
I mean, the water at one point came into the first floor of houses back there and could do that again. It's another one of those things where we thought maybe the reason was because they did a big logging project up in Norton that that year and there's just nothing. It's like the Webster Brook Bridge. The logging might have contributed to that too, you know, it clears off the land. There's no trees to catch the water and the water shed, so. But anyway, that's something that should be, we're gonna, everything that, if you're gonna ask for money from a grant, it better be in the town plan. That's a problem. That's the bottom line. So.
So yes, hazard mitigation will be underneath the flood resilience thing.
There used to be a bigger bridge there years ago.
I got a picture of it. I actually have a picture of it. Remember when Richard Gervais took it out and put in those culverts and the, the state came in and did a hydrological study? And said, this is what you need to replace that bridge and put in those two big culverts with headers? Washed the road out twice after that. Completely just gone.
I didn't know you had a picture of it.
Yeah, I have a picture of it. It was, I, I estimated the size of it to see whether the culverts had the same capacity and they don't. They just don't have the capacity of it. I mean, that was the I forget. It was a fair sized little bridge.
It was. Because I lived here all my life, so I know. And it never flooded much before that bridge was, when that bridge was there.
That's right, never flooded that. Anyway. Anyway, so what else do we do?
So then we have, this is the, the, the process. This is what we're gonna project it. We don't know if this is how it's gonna end up, but this is what we're projecting now anyway. Starting with the kickoff meeting, then we'll have two more public meetings. And each of those will have speakers and, you know, we're kind of looking at the two big sections of the town plan that need rewritten are um, housing and economic development. Those are the two big areas that are really just outdated and need, need a whole lot of work in the town plan. And so both of those, we'd like to bring in speakers and that's what the grant was to cover speaking fees and stuff like that. Um, and also in those two meetings, what I was thinking, since we're a planning commission of five, we could do some small breakout groups for some of the smaller sections of the town plan that don't need as much work. But, you know, pulling a group of, you know, divide the group up into, you know, ten people each or whatever and just kind of go over, you know, here's what's in the town plan currently.
Have any opinions?
Right. What, what, do, do you think that we're missing something? Do you, is there something you'd like to see in there? There, you know, just advice?
Right, I mean, we, and we wanna record those because it's important to document that we did outreach.
Right. So each of us would take, you know, a group or two of us would take it because I don't, there's not that many sections to the town plan. So you know, I'm thinking like maybe three breakout groups each time. And we would pretty much cover the whole town plan, but it gets people in town involved in that planning process opposed to just us sitting around a table of five people. So there's that. Um, then also what Allison Lowe suggested was a walk, walking kind of tour around town.
So to see where there might be space for crowding dwellings closer together, basically.
But that's not, that's not taking place Wednesday.
No, 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 no. This is our, this is our down the line. This is everything we're doing this year because the town plan is, you know, nine to twelve month process before we're gonna get to the.
Gotta be done by April next year, is all I know. Well, it's gotta be done and confirmed.
Right.
After we get done, it goes, it gets copied after the board, after the select board. The planning commission has to adopt it after public hearing. The select board has to adopt it after public hearing.
I think I saw already, the select board has to have two public hearings.
They might, then it has to be sent to all the surrounding towns. It has to be put in the center of the state. Then it has to go to NVDA and they review it. They have a committee that just reviews town plans and they decide whether it will conform, whether, they have to pass a motion to confirm our town plan. Once our town plan is confirmed, then we're eligible for all the benefits and not before. NVDA is the regional planning commission, so they they confirm.
So do you think that we would need to have it done by March and you get all these things afterwards?
We don't want it to dawdle.
Yeah. Because you can't wait that long.
Oh, we don't want to dawdle.
Water and sewer.
Oh, okay. You don't need to do it once.
Yeah, I know. I made copies of it.
Um. And then, so I'm gonna work on slides over the next two days, which all wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plants, downtown project with the water line replacement and the broadband expansion.
Water line replacement is from Mountain Street under the tracks.
All the way, pleasant, is it, is it, uh, no, it's, is it?
The Derby Street.
The Derby, yes, yeah, right there at the Wolf's Center, I think, is where it stopped.
That's what I, that's one of the reasons I use to justify the grant is, you know, it's, we have to figure out. Gotta remember, we will be tearing up Cross Street to replace a hundred year old water line because we have to do that within the next five years. That's gotta be done. So once we're down there, do we wanna tear up the street again for a downtown project, for sidewalks or for the stormwater line that's down there or for you know, replace sewer service lines? No, we're gonna do this. That's.
You're gonna, you're gonna tear up a half a million dollars worth of hot tub to redo it again?
Right, right.
No, that, that water line is driving a lot of stuff, you know, it's what but we gotta be prepared for that because we gotta figure out the downtown section of fixing that water line is being engineered by Aldrich or by Dufrain and Henry. Whereas the other parts are being engineered by Aldrich and Elliot. And we have to figure out how we're gonna coordinate. It's the same damn water line. We don't I'm not sure we want, and this is one of the questions of why we have to plan. We have to think about this. What if one engineer says, well, we want you to use this kind of steel pipe here, but the other engineer said, oh, the pipe what I'm doing was, you know, it's like, no, we don't want that. We want we probably want one engineer, but that means we gotta do these projects at the same time.
Yeah.
So you see how this is really fairly complex.
That one's gonna be.
Planning.
That's gonna be a heading.
Called dance, yes.
So is the money appropriated already for the sidewalks?
Oh.
We had talked.
No money.
Huh?
There's no money for the downtown project.
I remember us talking about that. I think in the.
It was at one time, what, nine million dollars? But I don't think.
No, no.
Well, it depends.
It's gonna be anywhere near that. It's gonna be higher.
It's gonna be ten million dollars to do this project, I think.
I, I thought it was in the downtown restoration or.
They tell you about.
Oh, there, there's no monies for that. We haven't applied for grants.
For the pavilion or anything.
And it depends.
Pavilion, like ninety-seven thousand?
Oh, that was that, yeah, that was a different, that was a small grant. It came from that engineering firm. They, because they they applied for that on, on our behalf while they were doing the, the PER for the downtown project. They said, oh, this money's available. And so they went and applied for a project that didn't really fit what we need anymore. You know, it was based upon the old landworks plan, which, you know, is old now. And so back in those days, we had Friday Night Live that was killing the grass in the park. And so there was a big discussion in the landworks plan about putting a cement patio around the pavilion so didn't have that. But we don't do that anymore. You know, we don't have the volunteers nor the money to do that.
And that's one of the things that I think we have to say to people who are worried about changing Ireland Pond and making it stow. Because when they first came to us, they talked about dumpouts and little cute.
Oh, yeah.
Here, we just want, all I want is sidewalks.
Yeah.
This is.
That you don't need a step ladder to climb on.
And some of it, some of it, I mean, there is some of it, you, you just kind of let those engineers, they, they talk about all that stuff. At, at the early stages, oh, yes, you let them do that. Doesn't mean you're gonna do that when you get to the actual, okay, here's final design.
Right.
Final design looks very different than preliminary engineer. And, and so that's, you know, and, and the engineers always, they love all that stuff because it looks great when they put it up on a screen.
Oh, yeah.
You know, oh, look, we're gonna do all of this.
Who's gonna maintain it?
Yeah. So remember, remember the green strip, the, the strip of grass that was gonna go along the edge? I'm like, who's mowing that?
Yeah, nobody.
That, for this much grass, it's gonna run down the sidewalk.
Same thing happened in another place. They ended up putting a back porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's worse.
Yeah.
I don't like that.
The grass went away. Nobody was taking care of it.
This is why you need a plan. You, you need, we need some plan for how we're gonna accomplish this. This is not a simple task. I mean, there is funding for the downtown project. There's plenty of funding. I'm sure that if we if we have a ten million dollar project, EDA is a big funder. The Rock Community Development Program has a million dollars. You know, there's, there's a different.
It'll be just like the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plants. It's gonna be a gazillion different funding sources.
Northern Borders will be involved.
We can do it.
There'll be a lot, there'll be a half a dozen different granting agencies to get.
The thing is, if we have a good town plan, we may be competitive for the flap grant.
Yeah, that's right, the flap.
Which is, um.
Federal Lands Access Program.
And I think that one was maximum of like a million dollars.
Yep.
And it's because we're the gateway community to the Sodiokanti National Wildlife Refuge.
But getting all these coordinating, all these grants, you, you run into problems. Like we're running into a problem with the, the permit for the sewage treatment plant for the fire safety, the construction permit, was ran out after a year. I mean, this is the timing part of these things. You've got to think about, okay, these grants have a time period. So putting that whole together is.
I just got it. I got an urge and I had to have a report filled out for, for um, NBRC today that they have some, you know, our deep evaluation, you know, you needed to report on all of this immediately. Here's a form, fill it out. I was like, okay, we got it a long time ago. But that was their question. Was your thing issued more than a year ago? Yes, it was. But it's good until twenty-eight, so we're, we're, we're golden.
Yeah, there is money for these things, but it's, it's, you gotta have a grand plan. You gotta have a plan of how this is gonna.
And figuring out how to, how to stack all the grants because, you know, you can't typically match federal with federal. So, you know, you have to be careful. Okay, it's great to say we got a million here, we got a million here, but if they both have a twenty percent match and they can't match each other, you're coming up with four hundred thousand dollars.
Of course, the whole downtown project starts off, can't go anywhere until we get the decision on moving the poles. So. Can't go anywhere until then.
Where is the call upon that? Are they even?
We haven't had time to have a meeting with them. There, there's been so much flooding and they've had some time.
Yeah.
You know, we were setting up a meeting to sit down and talk with them.
And we did meet with them.
Well, I thought you did.
We did. But this was the, the meeting to talk about the legalities, whether they have to pay the poles. Because our attorney says, when you're doing a full construction road reconstruction project like we're doing, the law is that the utility companies, if you need them to move something, they have to move it at their cost. Reasonable, you know, but that's we'll see how that works out because I think that if, you know, we can't be, if we want anything special, then we have to pay for anything special over the top. And if it's just moving the poles from here to there, although we're talking about moving them from here to the back, all their street. So they might try and raise an argument of, well, that's, you know, a little bit more. So we'll see, but right now that's our position is that they would have to pay. Um. But if they, and then we have to decide if they say no and suppose they win, what do we do with the sidewalk where those poles are? Because there could be a sidewalk. I can't see working around those poles to put a sidewalk in. I just can't. You have to dig all around the pole. Wouldn't be a major operation. The poles are right in the middle of the sidewalk.
I know.
Just moving the poles is gonna be a major operation because you're gonna refeed everybody.
That's right.
And it's all gonna be.
Well, actually, there's only a few. There's not many properties on Cross Street that actually get their power from Cross Street. The vast majority of them come off the backside.
Yeah, it's all on the backside here.
And so, um, yeah, but they're not, they're not served off Cross Street.
So that's not gonna be that big.
It's not, it's not as bad like Irving, um.
Gulets.
Nope, Gulets, I don't.
They get it from back.
They get it behind, they get it from back down here.
But it comes off that line two behind. That's what I'm getting at. If you look at the transmission line, everything that's on this side of the street comes from the poles on Cross Street.
Well, this is.
Right, right, but it does, it won't affect the service lines into the business because they will just take it underground to a pole behind the building and just feed those poles again and they'll leave all of that. Because like where my old building is, all those hobos, that whole block is served off of Railroad Street. It doesn't come off Cross Street.
That's correct.
But until. But the hotel doesn't come off Cross Street either.
But until we know whether the company will move those poles and pay for them, we can't, we can't design a project because that's, every project runs up, you know, that's gonna be the first thing, one of the first things we have to do. So there's a lot of thinking that's gonna have to go into this whole thing. But right off, to start, not right off, we have the water and the sewer treatment plants. That's.
Those are our first big ones.
Priority.
That is still the same date.
Yeah, mid-May, mid-May, there, um, she's supposed to be sending the, we ever get Cindy Parks because they're sending us the contract to sign.
We do have the Act two fifty permit.
Yes, yes, we got that. And we should have the new construction permit. I saw she, she sent that into, so we should get that pretty quick.
Question, it's not gonna cost us any money.
I know, I know. And I had said the right question right after, right after, then she said, oh, you don't have to pay that because it's a CWS or.
I was like, oh. Because when I looked at my, because when I looked at my project sheet when I filled it out before, is it thirty-eight thousand dollars on it?
Yes.
I'd say, oh, because it's a percentage of the construction cost.
Because of our funding source, we don't pay that.
That's good.
So. Um. So other housekeeping wise, I'll have worked with Bruce on setting up the room down there Wednesday morning. Um. Kingdom Market is making sandwiches. I went to BJ's on Saturday. I've got water, I've got seltzer water and I got data chips and I bought a cookie tray with duck and chip and oatmeal raisin, whatever.
That was nice.
So.
So hopefully this will.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go shake some trees or try and get some people to come out. I, I actually, the forum paid for a small ad because it, we didn't have that advertised too far, so the twenty-five dollars behind it, but.
Um, it's not gonna be virtual though, right?
No, we can't do it down there. It just I was thinking we could record it if we wanted to, but it's, you know, that's a whole, if I'm doing pre presenting, it's hard. If there's something goes wrong, I'm not gonna be able to watch that at the same time. My town meeting day, I, I videoed it, streamed it on, on. My town meeting day, I, I videoed it, streamed it on, on, just like this, but.
How long do you think these sessions will go? Couple hours at most?
I would think, yeah, I would think two hours, people are gonna get tired after.
Yeah, after two hours.
I mean, because the first half hour, it's gonna be everybody chatting and getting food and all of that. I was also, I did bring, I have one of those big display things, like you see at a trade show, Velcro pictures and stuff on it. I was thinking maybe I create kind of one for water, so that people can kind of look at before the meeting. Set it up on a table.
Show copies of the existing town plan out there.
Yeah, I'll print those tomorrow. Anything else?
We're good? Billy, good? Okay, moving on, I mean, there's really no public comment, nobody's here.
Public here.
Yeah. And, okay, so the zoning board update, I did notice that Brett Hedges is on the board now.
What board?
Zoning board.
There is no zoning board.
Well, downstairs where the permits are.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant.
Well.
We used to have the zoning board of adjustment, wh- which was the prior thing to the DRB.
Oh.
So when you said the zoning board, that's how we always referred to it. Board of zoning administration, or Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Yeah.
Oh, he's on there?
Yeah, he's, um, putting up a structure, big structure.
Okay.
And then, of course, we had, um, Kim Roses is up there now, he's building a big garage, like a forty by forty. And that's the own, oh, then there's another person, this cabin guy, LLC. I don't, I don't, he's from East Haven Road, he's building some.
Oh, the guy, the cabin guy?
Yeah, yeah, this is a cabin, something rentals or something. Who's that guy on? It's on.
I don't know, I forget his name. He was very active in the anti-water, uh, anti.
Oh, oh.
Towers. Because he's had all these log homes with a vista of the east mountain, and he was picturing towers, five hundred foot tall towers on it.
What, what is he doing?
You know, when you go down one fourteen, there's a guy off to the left in East Haven that has, it's got a sign there in a driveway, it says.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I know, I've been up there, I looked around.
Yeah, I did too. So, so what's he, what's he doing there?
I don't know.
Oh.
It's the first I know. No, Nick didn't tell me, it doesn't, if there's a problem, he doesn't ask me.
Yeah, okay.
But that, that, that's not Brighton.
No.
No.
Oh, he's building something in Brighton.
Yes, it's a, but it's East Haven Road.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's part, yeah.
Part of East Haven Road isn't Brighton.
Yes, okay.
Not down that far.
No, it's not, stops.
But he builds everywhere.
Yes, he does, yeah.
There's stuff everywhere.
Maybe that was his address, then maybe East Brighton though, probably.
Well, it's the address of where he wants to build, whatever he wants to build, that's, the permits go with the land.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing to do with Brighton.
Okay.
We'll see.
That's why I was confused when you were talking, that's why.
If it has nothing to do with Brighton, why is it up on our permit board?
No, he wants to build, he wants to build something in Brighton.
Oh, he does.
I think, that's why he's up there.
Yeah.
I don't know where or what, but that's next.
Those are the only three up there. So if you want to get ahold of Nick, just email him, text him or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that? I mean, we don't, that's all I have, because I read the board, that's, he doesn't contact me or anything, but I'm glad that when you sent him something that you had the courtesy to send me in as well, that was, that was. Did you even hear from Beth on that?
Yes, I wrote Beth and I said, are there any maps that went forward? She said, there were no.
Okay, so I didn't get it on my return.
That's why it's useful to have this document that you gave me.
Yeah, that, that was good. But I found it.
I did have a conversation with Nick. I don't think I've told you this, but stop me if I have. He wanted to, he was reading the bylaw and he came across a section where it said permits are good for two years. And he had some COs that he was requested to sign. And they were ten years old, not fifteen.
I know, I got that paper.
So, so he said, what I would do when I get those old COs is I would do my best to check to see, did they build what they said they were supposed to build, where they were supposed to build. Does, does it meet zoning now? And if it did, I issued the CO. You know, it's like I didn't, but he got into the, went down a little bit of a rabbit hole and said, well, now some of these places, they might have added on after the two years, and if they did that, they should have got a permit. So do you want, you know, if I go back and look at some of these permits, you know, then I, you know, he wanted to look up the contractor who did maybe illegal work and stuff, and I said, just said, you can do that. But you're gonna really spend a lot of time for no good really reason. If they built what they said they were gonna build, just give them a CO. If they didn't build what they said they were gonna build, that's a wholly different story. If they built bigger than they said, they better get a new permit.
So that page that we had on the tracking that you're giving way back, those are the ones you're talking about, the COs, that he had those questions and.
Yeah, he wanted, he wanted to delve into, he wanted to go and look, but he actually would have required Lisa and Teresa to do the work, because he just doesn't, he's not here. So he wanted to go back and look into the history of, of the, of the CO and see whether there was any work, and then go look at the house or something and find out whether there was any work done after the two-year period when there shouldn't have been any work done. And I just, you know, it's like, really? It's like, we don't have time for this. You get paid six thousand dollars. Go get that guy at the end of Derby Street, finish his house.
Hey, where's your?
I have, I have.
Other things for sure.
Were the VF burned down? That's still town property. Or was that given to the VF?
It's a good question, that's come up before. I don't, I don't, there's no, I don't know of a deed that says it belongs to the town. We don't include it on our town property that I know of, not that I know of.
Okay.
I think they own that, it was owned by the VFW. There was some discussion about somebody giving something, but I could never confirm it. I couldn't come up with any documents.
I, I was just concerned a little bit because I noticed a site that had been cleaned up over a weekend. And the stuff was all hauled away, and I didn't want the town to be responsible if they didn't separate their stuff and where did it go?
Oh, yeah.
You, you know what I'm getting at?
Oh, yeah, oh, no.
I didn't want the town to be in a, in a rabbit hole. When you said rabbit hole, that, that's what brought that up.
No, we would, if that was, we would be careful of that.
Yeah, because, you know, you're supposed to have paperwork to where all this stuff went.
Which, they tore it down, they, it wasn't completely, wasn't completely demolished, right? They had to tear some of that down.
They tore it.
Yeah, they tore it down.
They didn't probably get a permit to check for asbestos or anything.
I doubt it. And, but, you know, you're supposed to separate the roofing tiles and all the metals and all that stuff, so. I just.
I think I did tell them that if it was any untreated lumber, they could take it to the stump dump, but.
I just didn't want the town to be responsible if we still owned the land.
I don't think so.
Is that, why is a schoolhouse at one time?
Just like, we don't own the Legion either, you know, it's like, those are private nonprofit groups.
So there must be a deed, so there must be a deed for that.
I'm sure there's a deed somewhere.
When it, when it changed hands.
I don't, do we send them a tax bill? I don't know if we send them a tax bill. Nonprofit, it might be exempt.
Just asking.
Yeah, no, no.
What else you got?
That's it for me, on the, I mean, Brett was the only thing that I really noticed, and that.
He told me that he had taken some cars away.
Oh, yeah, he did, he did. It's looking bad.
He would, he sat in a meeting and said he would do that.
Yeah.
You talking about the one down on Meadow Street?
Yeah.
I, I had gone to, uh, the treatment plant when I delivered the trailer, was that? I delivered it to the treatment plant and they, they were, had some equipment there, and they were moving stuff out. So, I, I wanted to mention that at the last planning board meeting, but I, I didn't.
I mean, I never did understand why he wants all those cars there. Anybody know why does he want those cars there? Why, why is he striving so hard to defend his right to have a bunch of junk cars there?
Probably because he just wants to.
Does he use them for parts or?
I don't know. But every time we go to Charleston and we see that they don't have zoning and you see some of those farms and stuff and you're going, is this what we want for Iowa Pond?
How about that, down in the low there, one of those things that guy has all that.
Oh, awful, down in the dip there.
And then I'll see.
After Buster, where Buster's.
Yeah.
And he'll kill me.
Buster can see that from his, from his, uh, porch.
Just blank.
Oh, sometimes they do work on. Uh, that's another, actually, the way we left that with the tax map with the guy was that Noah was gonna be the one to update the tax map. So I've got to write Michael Schueller and say that you guys got to start coming out here and looking at our surveys and updating, looking at our, to see if we've got any new properties to list. I don't think we're doing it, I think the tax map's probably way out of date now again.
Well, maybe the next town manager will.
Get the work, Mike.
Yeah, town manager.
Yeah.
More prioritize things than that.
Yeah, some of that I just look at, and I'm like, why, why are, I mean, we pay them to keep up the tax map. We pay them a good chunk of money.
Oh, yeah.
Why are we doing their work for them?
Well, to get it more, to get it quicker. That was what we were after, because they come, the state has a tax map, but they update it once a year. So the zoning administrator goes, you get an application, and it has, what people usually do is they buy property, and then they want to build something. And so you get an application for a zoning permit, and you look at the name and you go look at the parcel number on the tax map, they don't match. Because it's the old property owner, because they haven't got the new, and that, it's just time that the zoning administrator then has to spend sorting out, finding out who sold it, who wouldn't, you know, what, is this the right property? So I tried to get them to update it more frequently, and they said, well, you can do that.
Well, what are we paying them for? Tell us if the sun is shining?
Well, they would only do it once every, you know, three months, or when we have a new, they, they come in, they look at the subdivision surveys, they wanna, that's what they want to see if there's any new subdivisions. So they might do it every few months, and I wanted it done, I wanted it done as soon as the PTTR was filed, I wanted to go right on the tax map, you know, the same day, what's the problem?
But we, but we.
But it turns out, but it turns out, we'd have to pay them more money to do that.
What, what? What, what are we paying them as it is every year now?
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Maybe not.
We did have to pay them a lump sum or something for doing.
We paid them a new lump sum this year, too, I remember seeing that on. No, that's, that's the listers, that's different.
No, that's different.
Different company. That's the other company that's getting a lot of money out of it right now.
People was, the other, the prior people was fifteen hundred dollars every, they gave us a new tax map every two years. On paper. And online. This tax map is quite a bit nicer than that was. But we want, they, they just, they just don't update it that often. The, the necessity for them is not the necessity for the zoning administrator. It's just I wanted it done so the zoning administrator would have an easier job, really. But, you know, when you go on the tax map, it'd be nice not to have it be three months out of date. A lot of people use the tax map now, I mean, it's available to the general public.
A lot of them come in here and look at records and go and look in the books and see how things changed hands.
These, this tax map, if you haven't gone online with this tax map and see all the features that it has, boy, I'm telling you, it's got, you can load, you can load contours on there, you can, you know, base layers, you can, it's, it's quite a nice piece of software, really, very useful. But it'd be more useful if it was done quicker. Anyway, so they said, oh, you can do that. So Lisa was gonna learn, we tried to set up a training for Lisa Moore so that we could do that. And COVID came and stuff like that, and, and then, and then it turned out that it was more complicated than Lisa could do, and then Noah said, well, I'll do it, but Noah never did. So now we have to go back and I have to call them and say, look, can you, it's back in your hands, we want you, I don't know how often you can update it, but please update it as often as you can, even at that. But right now, I'm not sure it's getting updated at all. Because they thought Noah was gonna do it.
We don't have access to anything to update it? Did Noah have any kind of, like?
It takes, it's some kind of a file that I didn't, beyond my computer knowledge, it's some kind of data file that he had to go into and change on the program and I, yeah, I don't know why it's so hard. I mean, it seems to me like.
It's all GIS mapping, and he loved GIS mapping.
That was his thing.
Oh, it was.
It was his thing, all right.
That's me, FEMA talked all about it. He loved to give maps, they weren't of any value, but he loved maps.
Anyway, I just, that wasn't so much planning, I just wanted to talk about the tax. Anything else? I'm sorry.
No, anybody else on zoning? No? The town plan, I, I put that in there, but I realized we're really doing that at a public meeting.
We've already been over that.
Yeah. Okay, so then the next one really is the approve the minutes of the previous meeting. We all read it, we're good? Good?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Well, no, other business, wait a minute. No other business, right? Nobody wants that?
Minutes are first.
You have to approve the minute.
Oh, oh, I didn't know.
I make a motion to approve the minute.
A second? I'll approve.
Hi.
Other business? Anybody want to bring up something? Anything? We're good? Somebody make a motion for adjourn?
Don't move. I like to make a.
All in favor?
All right.
Our meeting adjourned. Thank you.